We'll get this thing going. Welcome everybody to the District 5 Supervisory Debate. I am Joey Lewis. I'll be your moderator today. And we've got with us today incumbent Rob Brown and his challenger Joan Moss. This evening is sponsored by the Lake County Chamber of Commerce and Lake County News. So, thank you for putting this on. And thank you for asking me to do it. I don't know what I have or any reason why I would be involved in the District 5 debate besides the fun of it. So, anyway, I'll tell you how tonight is going to work. We had a coin toss just a moment ago of what Joan won. So, she chose for Rob to go first with the first question. Each candidate will then take turns. Each candidate will get one minute at the beginning to introduce themselves and two minutes at the closing for a closing statement. When asked a question, each candidate will get two minutes to respond. After the second candidate has answered, the first candidate will get a one-minute rebuttal. Then, to make it really interesting, at the end, each candidate will have the opportunity to ask the other candidate one question of which they will have four minutes to answer. And then, the person asking the question will get to rebut their answer for one minute. And then, the person who has answered the question will get another rebuttal. So, it should make for an interesting ending to our debate. So, with that, also, we have Elizabeth Larson from Lake County News is keeping time. The yellow card means you have 30 seconds left. At the end, she will put up the red card of your time, or the end of your time, you will see the red card, and she will also say "time." So, with that, we will start, and I'll let Joan go ahead and start.
I let him go.
Well, you won, so you get to introduce yourself first.
I am Joan Moss.
And then, you have, how long do you have? You have, each candidate gets one minute to introduce themselves and tell us about yourselves, so.
Oh, I thought I was gonna let Rob go first.
Okay, if you want to.
Yes.
That's fine. Rob?
I'm Rob Brown, and I currently am the District 5 Supervisor. I'm seeking reelection, and I appreciate the opportunity to come to you in this forum. Thank you very much, Elizabeth and Lake County News. Thank you Mayor Lewis for moderating. I know exactly why you were asked to do it. They needed somebody that would be fair and impartial and be able to control the crowd, so I think you're the guy.
Have you seen some of our meetings?
No, and evidently either is Elizabeth. So, I do appreciate the opportunity to come, and this campaign has been no different than the last few campaigns that I've been involved with. It's a good opportunity to meet the constituents and continue to understand what the needs are for that particular moment in time. They're not nearly the same as they were when I first ran for office, but some of them are very similar. And to accept the challenges that are faced with Lake County in these upcoming fiscal times, and I just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Joan?
Hi, I'm Joan Moss, and I am the challenger. I have watched the Lake County Board of Supervisors since before Kelly Cox came to Lake County. I've been a freelance reporter. I'm not, I don't have a steady job with any special newspaper. I did break the story about the Mercury Mine becoming a superfund site. I did break the story into the Chronicle when the inmates of Lake County, and they had hearings about the Lake County Jail. I tend to be liberal. I tend to respect the people of Lake County. I think the people of Lake County are amazing. They're very intelligent. They're very independent thinking. In the last four years, people such as the Friends of Cobb, Friends of Rattlesnake, other groups have come forth, and I believe that they should be heard. I don't think they should be looked upon as we and them.
Thank you, Joan.
It's us.
All right, on to the first question of what Rob Brown will be answering. The county will soon lose longtime county administrative officer Kelly Cox. What do you see as the biggest contribution Mr. Cox has made in his career? And as supervisor, what will you do to see that his replacement is as successful?
Well, that's a tough one. I don't think there's any one contribution, and I know it's a little awkward because Kelly is here in the room, and he does not like fanfare, but he is one that deserves it more than anybody that I've ever met. The 32 years that Kelly Cox has been here has brought to the county a common sense approach for dealing with fiscal issues, but it's been much more than that. He has an understanding and a historical perspective of Lake County that it's gonna be very hard to replace. And in answer to the question, what are we gonna do to replace him? We're going through that process right now, which Kelly is a part of, but the board has taken into serious consideration. We've interviewed, I think, the original application pool was 42 candidates, and it's down to a handful now that we're considering and trying to identify exactly what that job is gonna look like once it's done. I don't think we're going to replace Kelly. I don't think it's fair to his replacement to attempt to replace Kelly. I think we need to find somebody that the board can be able to work with, and the budget, in my opinion, is probably the most important aspect of that at this point.
Thank you, Rob. Joan, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I appreciate Kelly. He's always answered my questions promptly. He has accurate answers. I think the greatest thing he's done is kept our county so that it is not in debt, like most of the other counties in the state of California. Financially responsible, I think he's had a lot of vision about what Lake County can be. And I think he engineered the purchase of Mount Canuckdi for a park. I think he had the vision of seeing the hotel in Lucerne become a college. And all we can do is be grateful that he's still here as a volunteer administrator. He has made it a vocation instead of a job. And when you have a vocation, you keep doing it whether you get paid or not. And I'm hoping that we can find someone, maybe he's already got someone he's trained and brought along. He has the happiest staff that I've ever seen. They're always pretty happy in there whenever you see them. He gets along with his staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. And Rob, would you like to rebut that?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. I, you know, it's, I think the more we talk about it, the more embarrassed we make Kelly, and out of respect for him, I really don't wanna do that.
All right, on to question number two, and Joan, you will start. Name a specific issue facing District 5 that is unique to the district. How would you address that issue?
One of the issues that is unique to the district is what's happening in the Clearlake Riviera. There are a number of manufactured homes that have inadequate septic tanks. These houses were built on quote "unbuildable land." And in some cases, these aerobic septic tanks, a three-bedroom aerobic septic tank is attached to a four-bedroom home. I think that is a great problem, raw sewage in the backyard. The other thing that is a big mystery to me is exactly what is in the lake? What is in toxic blue-green algae or cyanobacteria? And what are the elements that make up some of the pollution that is in Lake County? In the lake? I would like to make that a very big priority in my district. We have a lot of houses that are right on the shore, and we need to investigate what part they have and whether they have inadequate or adequate septic. And the state is coming down and insisting that we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Rob?
Tell me again the process. When will a rebuttal come for that answer?
After you answer yours.
Okay. The biggest challenge that we face in District 5 is Canuckdi Harbor. And until we have, we have been able to work with potential buyers to bring them in to open that resort and get the jobs back where it once was and then some, I think we're gonna continue to have a problem. We have a very high unemployment rate in Lake County traditionally, even with Canuckdi open, but with Canuckdi closed, it just exacerbates it that much more. And so, I think the primary focus right now is getting those jobs and getting Canuckdi open. Second, if I could have another, continue with my time, I think roads are always an important issue in all the districts, but District 5 especially because we don't have as much state highway as some of the other districts do. So, roads and funding for those roads and maintenance is a big issue.
Joan, would you like to rebut?
Yes, I understand that there is a team of people, including a rock star and a contractor in Lake County and other contractors, who are coming together to purchase Canuckdi Harbor in, but I haven't heard anything public as yet. It would be a great boon to the county if it would reopen. The potholes on my street and in some county roads on the mountain, people have talked to me about them, they are a problem. I think we need to get creative and find ways to fix the roads that might not be in evidence yet. But roads are, I don't know why, the roads in Kelseyville are great, and the roads, and people complain about the roads in the river. I don't understand it, but I'm sure willing to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you both. And as the mayor of Clearlake, I am unsympathetic to your road conditions. All right, question number four.
So, there's no rebuttal for that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, to answer her question, the reason there is, no, no rebuttal?
Sorry, I'm losing track.
I can get on to it with another.
You'll have another chat.
Got you all screwed up talking about those roads.
All right, question number three. The Lake County wine industry has seen great success in the past 10 years. As the industry grows, how will you ensure the county will continue to support the local wineries? And what benefits do you see the industry bring to Lake County as a whole? And that is starting with you, Rob.
Well, the wine industry has been a real salvation to the county. 12 years ago, there were a handful of wineries in Lake County, and now I think there are upwards of 30. Is that correct? Who would know better than me?
Over 30 now.
And that's huge for Lake County. That's bringing, putting Lake County on the map. We have a very active wine grape commission that they just recently returned from the east coast where they had a very successful trip in putting Lake County even more on the map than we already are. We're becoming more and more known as the Napa North, and that's a huge distinction. Working with them and their permitting processes, I think, is to streamline the processes for wineries. We have a lot of grapes coming in. It's slowed down some, and it's slowed down quite a bit over the last four, five years, but the wineries are what we're really looking for right now. Bring those wineries in, bring those jobs in, and bring the tourists in.
Thank you, Rob. Joan?
I think the wine industry is very important to Lake County. I myself have had trouble with wine. It might have caused my cancer. I do think we have to realize that wine and beer are alcohol, and we do have counselors for alcohol and other drug services. And if we take wine too seriously, the way I used to, it can get us into a lot of trouble. But I think the recent wineries and the culture it has brought and the money it has brought is good. I'm very sorry about all the alcoholism, and it's not just wine, of course. But I do think Lake County has a problem with alcohol. I've heard the ABC told one manager of a store that Lake County has the highest level of selling of alcohol of any, of quite a few people. So, I do think alcohol and drugs are a problem. But I think the wine industry, I went to a winery in Kelseyville, and she gives classes, and I'm willing to take one about wine, to learn the good parts about it.
Thank you, Joan. Rob?
I think there needs to be a clear distinction between the wineries and the wine grape industry in Lake County and the problems with alcoholism. I don't think there's a relationship there. Alcohol obviously causes alcoholism. Wineries and the wine industry in Lake County create jobs, and that brings people, the jobs will bring people out of the poverty that actually causes that alcoholism to occur. I don't think there's anything, and to have somebody say, "I heard that somebody from ABC said we have more alcohol sold than other people." I have no idea what that means.
Absolutely right.
That actually makes no sense.
I will have to call them and get definite. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rob. On to question number four. The county has lost its redevelopment agency on the north shore due to the state dissolving all agencies in California. Do you believe the agency was a success in accomplishing its purposes? And what will you do as a supervisor to accomplish those purposes both countywide and in District 5 without redevelopment? And that one goes to you first, Joan.
I think that there is a way to redefine code enforcement. And I think when people, I remember I read about Mr. Brown's platform that there is a way of repairing houses for low-income people. I think once we solve the problem of people not having jobs and not having enough money, that things will improve. I like the one-stop shop. I wish there was an apprentice program. Don Merrill has wanted to bring apprentice programs into Lake County. I think there are ways of getting stimulus grants and putting people to work repairing roads. We have to get creative. I do think that some of the redevelopment funds will be refunded into the roads and into the schools, and redevelopment may come back, but in another form.
Thank you, Joan. Rob?
District 5 has never had redevelopment funds. And I have never, it's not a big secret that I have not been a big fan and supporter of redevelopment, but some aspects of it I have. One of those is the purchase of the castle in order to attract a college in here, which that's happening. There are some good aspects of it that I appreciate as far as the infrastructure, sidewalk curbs, gutter, roads, that type of thing. In the areas where redevelopment occurred, I was not a big supporter of buying more and more land. The county has done an exemplary job with the purchases that it has made along the lake there, the park properties. I have to, you know, give a lot of credit to those that did that in spite of my concerns. However, those redevelopment funds are gone. I don't believe they'll come back. We're negotiating, you know, trying to relieve some of the debt that we have, or some of the responsibility we have with those redevelopment funds, and Kelly and his staff, Alan Flora and others are working on that diligently, and I think they're gonna be successful with that. But as far as redevelopment funds in District 5, I don't, it's never happened, and I doubt that it'll ever occur. I think District 5 has traditionally done it on its own, and will continue to do it on its own, and it will be successful.
Thank you, Rob. Joan?
Redevelopment funds were dealing with blighted property that wasn't up to the real value, and then people would sell the house and then redo it. I think there are a lot, there's a lot of houses and a lot of businesses that are empty, and it would be really nice to find a way to fill them.
Thank you, Joan. On to question number five, and we will start with you on this one, Rob. The in-home supportive services program has been subject to cuts in recent years and is facing more proposed cuts by the governor. Lake County has a large senior population, and IHSS has helped many local seniors stay in their homes. In what ways can the county assist in helping seniors remain independent as IHSS cuts continue? What role can a county supervisor play in improving the lives of local seniors?
Well, we're not gonna solve all the problems. I understand that the IHSS was well-intended initially when it first became, you know, a program that the state supported. However, it became the new welfare system. It was filled with people who were recently out of prison that were constantly going to jail. In my office, a few feet away, I have a folder this big of booking sheets of people who were booked into the jail and said that they are IHSS workers. That we have to get rid of. It is nice to have people be able to live in the dignity of their own home, however, it's not good if you're creating victims, and that's what has happened. There have been several, there have been deaths that have occurred as a result of some of these IHSS workers, and I think for the government to condone that by not doing something about that is just deplorable.
Thank you, Rob. Joan?
Well, I myself have recently become an IHSS worker 10 hours a week, and I believe, I went to a couple union meetings, and I never met one drug, to me, they were people. They were low-income, but they were people, and they chose to work. In the induction that I went through, they were young people, and they'd rather work than not work, and I respected that. I do not, I'd like to know if there was investigations about the people who died because of an IHSS worker? And with the screening you have to go through, you have to give them your fingerprints, you watch movies. The state and the federal government are trying very hard to take away the fraud that exists. And for me, it's honorable work. I worked as an IHSS worker before, and I think it's very honorable, and I think that the IHSS workers deserve a living wage.
Thank you, Joan. Rob, would you like to?
Yes, as I stated, there are several people in there that are criminals, criminal element. Yes, there were investigations done. There have been several burglaries, embezzlement, assaults, you name it, it has occurred. That is not to say that all IHSS workers are that way. It's been my contention, and it's because of Lake County's lead on this, that now there are, there is fingerprinting that's being done. I'm not sure exactly what good watching a movie does, but I think background checks that are in-depth are necessary in order to make this continue to be successful. I agree, the folks that are legitimate IHSS workers don't make enough money. They could, in my opinion, be making $20 or $30 an hour if we would get rid of the criminal element and only pay those that deserve it.
Thank you, Rob. All right, on to the next question, and we'll start with Joan this time. In Lake County, the dispensing and cultivation of medical marijuana has been the subject of two very controversial ordinance and soon-to-be ballot measures. What do you believe will be the most comprehensive outcome that will be fair to residents on all sides of the issue?
Well, I think no matter which way you look at it, the problem has been solved. To my way of thinking, the people that came and wanted a voice did what they did. They got a referendum, and they got their own initiative. If that initiative is not passed, or maybe there is already a ballot measure in place, what I was very happy to see is that the county has voted to have a representative advisory committee get together on what ordinance they come up with if Measure D is not passed. I really respect what the people did. They did it, they wanted what they wanted. They wanted a voice in their own law, a law that involved them. And I believe in Proposition 215. The Democratic Party doesn't even have a stand on this because it has not yet been decided nationally or statewide. So, I think it's still being decided, but Lake County will win because either there will be Measure D that's passed, or there will be a joint committee that includes a grower, a dispensary owner, a marijuana farmer, another kind of a farmer. It will be a representative committee that decides on the ordinance that will be an alternative to Measure D.
Thank you, Joan.
Did she mean to say joint committee? Oh, I'm sorry.
Whatever it was, an advisory committee. You voted on it.
Take your time, Rob.
Just last week.
Okay, so, the, what she said is what the people did. She respected what the people did. Let me explain what the people did. There was a group of people who did not like the idea of the Board of Supervisors telling them that they could not grow marijuana in a residential area. They went out and they began the referendum process. What they did was spend $25,000 of their money to hire people from out of Lake County to come in and gather 2,100 signatures that were all that were required in order to take this away from an ordinance and then put it back on the ballot. They really accomplished not a lot. That's not clearly a mandate. That's only a legal requirement in order to have something put on the ballot. If Measure D passes, it will allow growing up to 12 plants in residential areas throughout the county. So far, the Deputy Sheriff's Association, the Chamber of Commerce, Kelseyville Business Association, Buckingham Homeowners Association, the Lake County Farm Bureau, and the Sierra Club have voted to oppose Measure D, and they've done that with good reason. They're concerned about what it'll do for the, to the general plan. They're concerned about what it will do for the environment, and they're concerned about the grows in residential areas. These are all concerns. Once this is passed on a ballot measure, the only way to get it amended is to have, create another ballot measure. It's very difficult to do. With our ordinance system that we have, you're able to amend ordinances fairly easily if they don't work out, and it happens all the time. You amend these ordinances, and you can draft changes depending upon the times and that. The ordinance that we adopted started about three years ago. Times were a lot different then. The feds and the state were much less involved, and that's why we began this process. Currently, the federal government has deputized, cross-deputized two of our deputies as DEA agents. They're very serious about the marijuana situation in Lake County now, and if you read Lake County News this morning regarding the doctrine in Upper Lake, you can tell that they're very serious about it. So, this joint committee is gonna have their hands full coming up with a reasonable solution for the upcoming ordinance.
Joan, would you like to rebut that?
Oh, I didn't think I had a chance. I would love to rebut. I believe that this, the people wanted, the people that came wanted a voice in the decision-making, and I support the people in that. And I believe that, I would like to, I would like to know from Rob if Rick Coell or the Board of Supervisors has taken a stand on Measure D. I'll ask him that at the end of the evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joan. All right. Special interests and their influence on campaigns for offices in all levels of government have become a nationwide concern. Have you accepted any donations, monetary or otherwise, from any special interests? And Rob, you?
My campaign has been solely based on the local people. I will only accept contributions of $99 or less. I have not been offered, nor have I accepted, any campaign contributions from any special interest other than the special interest of these people that are out here in this audience.
Thank you, Rob. Joan?
Yes, I have accepted donations from the Lake County farmers, and I've accepted other donations of less from a couple people on Cobb, and it's all on the record in the second floor if anybody wants to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, did you wanna rebut?
I would like to rebut that. I would like to make that, make it a little clearer. She said she received a contribution from the Lake County farmers. That's not to be confused with real farmers. That's to be stated as the Lake County Green Farmers Association, the group that is behind Measure D cultivation ordinance. Joan reported in her last report that she raised $981. 300 of that she loaned herself. Since then, she's received a $2,000 contribution from the Lake County Green Farmers Association marijuana growers. So, clearly, over two-thirds of her contributions come from marijuana interests on the north shore.
Joan, have to save it. All right. This one, this one's very personal to me. Not really, but you'll understand. And you better answer it correctly, both of you. What will you do to maximize the cooperation and accomplishment between the two What will you do to maximize the cooperation and accomplishment between the two cities and county government? What is the biggest challenge you either currently see or foresee in this current, in this crucial relationship? And we'll start with you, Joan.
Well, I love to go to Clear Lake City Council meetings. It's like a circus to me, and it's really fun. But I also, for 20, 30 years, I've been watching Lake County government, and I love to watch Lake County government. I don't go to, go to the Lakeport City Council meetings that, that often. But I would like to see cooperation and collaboration among the counties and the two cities, and I'd like to see collaboration and cooperation, more of it, between the county and the state, and the county and the federal. We can't look at each other as enemies, fighting for water, fighting for, you know, fighting. We have to get together and work because there are very serious problems that even today and in the future that we have to face. So I'd like to see more joint meetings, more, maybe less formal meetings where people get a chance to talk to each other instead of just have meetings about the South, Lakeport water, and where it's going to go, and who's going to do what, where there's competition.
Thank you, Joan. Rob?
Well, I'm fortunate enough to be on several committees with several members of both cities, and I have a great working relationship with them. I know there are some differences that we have regarding, for instance, in Lakeport. The biggest challenge that we face is the, the potential for annexation of South Lakeport. There are, there is no way that, or, let me put this a different way. There are lots of ways that we can, to work to mediate this. We know these people. There are friends, there's sit-ups with, in committees for Indian Gaming Funds, for Clean Water Commission, you know, all these different things. What my opponent says is I'd like to see all these people get together. We get together. I've never seen her at any of these meetings. There is a really good relationship. Of course, we have our differences. In, in the city of Clear Lake, you know, we've worked with you, I've spent a lot of time talking to you about different things as it relates to Clear Lake. Our road department has loaned equipment to the road department in Clear Lake and, and the city of Lakeport. They, they get along good, those, those departments do. I think the biggest weakness that we have, with the exception of this annexation, the biggest weakness that we have right now is potentially our law enforcement. The ability, the inability for our sheriff to be able to work with the chiefs of police in these cities is, it just, it, there's no explanation for it. And I think that's, that's the major problem that we have right now. In order to keep both city and the county safe and protected, is to have a better relation, working relationship between our sheriff and those city police chiefs that I happen to have a great deal of respect for.
Thank you, Rob. Joan, rebut?
Well, this annexation, I saw the Lakeport, the, the city council, Lakeport City Council and the supervisors at odds with each other over bringing water to the South Main. And I believe a citizen stood up and said, "The citizens don't want sewer and water. They want to keep their own wells." So I think not only the city council and the Lake County supervisors, but citizens do have a right to express their opinion, and they should be considered also, citizens from both the county and the city. I think sometimes when people become supervisors, it's just all the people up here that get to talk and decide what happens with all the people down there. And I think the people who sit in the seats over there also need a voice.
Thank you, Joan. All right. You two have behaved yourselves so far. Thank you. This next question?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No. This is the final question before your closing statements. And this is the chance, the question where you'll have a chance to ask each other whatever you want. I may be in purple, I don't want to be a crushed grape. Don't make me come up there and split you up. But anyways, Rob, it is your turn to ask first, so I will let you ask Joan any question you want.
Well, you know, in all fairness to Joan, I think there is a, a lot more questions that she may have of me, and I would like to answer any of those at this point. The thing that I would like to ask Joan is, she has, she has taken it upon herself to not delve into issues, not work on issues with this campaign, but to spend a great deal of time at the different county agencies trying to dig up dirt on me. She's been unsuccessful. She has made things up in order to make this possible. And given the fact that, of the things that I have done for her over the years as a friend, if she honestly believes any of the nonsense that she's perpetrated out there regarding marijuana grows and, and things like that, false claims to the federal, or the Fair Political Practices Commission, and, and different things that she's taken apart of.
I think that's a really good question, Rob. And I want to tell you that you have been a wonderful friend. The last four years, it all started with the genetically engineered crop advisory committee. I saw discrimination, and when I collected signatures, I was very surprised at people who are afraid. And what I've looked up, and I haven't done anything with what I found, is public record documents. And I'm, if I do it, I'm going to do it correctly. But Rob and I have voted, I would have voted differently on Friends of Cobb, I would have voted differently on Friends of Rattlesnake, I would have voted differently about the genetically altered organism ban that was taken away. On almost every issue, I would have voted differently. And what it does is come down to issues and respecting the people who stand up to get their three minutes to talk, and recognizing people that want to contribute but are considered, they're, they're patronized and they're interrupted, and they are, they, they're not respected.
And Rob, you have one minute to rebut Joan's answer.
There's not much to say. It's, it's generalization, there's no specifics. No one's been interrupted, no, nobody's been denied a voice. We have public meetings over and over and over, ad nauseam about issues. Everyone's been able to speak. No one has been denied the opportunity to speak. Sometimes it goes on a little bit long, and they have to be cut short. At some point, it goes on and on. When we're talking about contrails, things that the county has nothing to do with, yes, that, that does have to end at some point. But as far as folks not having a voice, that's just inaccurate.
And Joan, you have one more minute?
Okay. I would like to get more specific about Measure D. I would like to know if the board, if to your knowledge, the Board of Supervisors, you or the Board of Supervisors, or the Planning Director, Rick Coell, has voiced opposition or asked people to take a stand against Measure D? Different groups or people?
Joan, so that, you were, you were allowed to rebut the question he asked of you. So now you're ready, that is going to be your question to him?
Uh huh. No, that's my question to him.
All right, so you're going to need the one more minute. Okay, so now we're on to Joan's question. To Rob?
The Board of Supervisors has not taken a position on Measure D. Rick Coell, as a planning director, has not taken a position on Measure D. He has come to answer questions at events that I've, that I'm aware of. He's answered questions as far as the, the effects of Measure D, what, what it actually means, what Measure D is. He has not taken a position as a county employee. I, on the other hand, have, and I will. I'll do everything I can to defeat Measure D. It is, it is to do damage, serious damage to a culture in Lake County that I have enjoyed my entire life as a third-generation county resident, and I, I won't stand idly by while this town is ruined by a bunch of out-of-town dopers that want to come up here, raise marijuana for a profit, and then take their profit, leave us with the dump for my grandchildren. I will not stand idly by. I'll put everything I have into it, my heart, my soul, my money, and my, any resource that I have to make sure that Measure D is, is defeated. If that's clear.
I'd like to say one more thing.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
Joan, you have one minute?
Yes, I do want to say that the check for $2,000 for advertising, on the check it says Lake County Farmers. It does not say Lake County Green Farmers. But, but I understand that, that it is Lake County Green Farmers, but the check does say Lake County Farmers. And there are names for the $985 that I don't, I, I really don't know for sure, that they don't identify themselves as green farmers. Or Lake County Citizens for Responsible Regulation. Thank you.
Rob, do you have one more minute to rebut that?
There's not much left to say. She got $150 from Tom Slate, who's the, the, the contrail guy, $150 from another person up on Cobb that, that is, that lives close by Bottle Rock Power, and $2,000 from the Lake, Lake County Green Farmers marijuana growers. So I can't make it any clearer than that either.
All right. And that is it for the questions. Before we go into our closing statements, again, I want to thank the Lake County Chamber of Commerce and Lake County News for hosting tonight's debate. Also Velocity Video for doing all the camera work and broadcasting us tonight, and that is McKenzie Payne. And thank all of you for coming. And with that, it is actually Joan's turn to go first, so two minutes, Joan, for your closing statement.
Fine. As I said, I'm a freelance journalist, and I, sometimes I wait five years for some really big stories. So I'm, I'm waiting. And I am a water safety instructor, I play the guitar for the Catholic Church. I did fight cancer. Presently, I'm fine. I'm very strong. And I love Lake County. We all want what is best for Lake County. And what I want is for people to come and participate in public hearings and have a say, and feel that they have a say in the laws that are made and the policies that are made. I don't want people to come here and feel that they are disrespected and put down and ignored. And that includes the people who did the referendum for the dispensaries, and that does include the people who wanted a voice, who grow cannabis. And the story isn't finished. Cities and counties are being told by judges that they cannot regulate dispensaries all over the state of California. We do have Prop 215. If Measure D passes by a majority of people in Lake County, it will be a very strong, be a very strong message. But I do believe that people who come here should be respected and included in the decision-making.
Thank you, Joan. Rob, your two minutes, closing?
If Measure D passes, it'll not only be a very strong message, but it'll be a very strong odor. Whole county will stink. We, we need to make sure that we defeat Measure D. As a board member, as a private citizen, makes no difference to me. I'll do everything I can to make sure that this measure is defeated. I have appreciated the opportunity that I've had to serve as a Lake County supervisor. Prior to that, being on the school board. I owe this community more than I can ever pay it back. I owe my family everything that I'm doing up here. My family includes five kids, two grandkids, and my wife. And every, every decision I make, I make knowing that I'm going to make some enemies. But I make them because it's from my heart. I think it's what's best for Lake County. It's never been what's best for me. I've had, I've never gained anything from this job. Anybody will tell you that in 12 years of being on the Board of Supervisors, I have never so much as even accepted a lunch from anybody as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I take this job very seriously, and I, I realize that I put myself out there. I do, I'm very conservative when it comes to politics and, you know, fiscally and socially. And I understand that there are, there are some challenges to that. But I believe in what I, what I, the decisions that I make, and I would, without question, every decision that I've made on this board, I'd do it again.
Thank you. Thank both of you, incumbent Rob Brown, challenger Joan Moss, for joining us tonight. I am Joey Lewis, the mayor of Clear Lake. It's an honor to, to host this event, and thank you out in TV land for joining us, and all of you for coming down. And have a wonderful evening.